I don't have the elbows on this now, we're still off. I'd like to welcome everyone tonight to our meeting. We do have a public hearing at 7:15 from which I will have to recuse myself. We do have some board and committee reports. I have a report, report of the chairman, Walker. It is the fact that I signed a PR 18-07, which is a payroll. We have some new business. And it's a request for public property use special permits, Donald Jarvis. Reeds across America. You did this last year?
Last two years.
Last, right now, okay. And it's use of firefighters memorial hall for ceremony on Saturday, December 16, 2017, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Would you like, can you ever tell us a little bit about what's going on here?
So, my name is Donald Jarvis. The last two years, we've been doing the Reef Across America program. We started the first year with 75 reeds. Last year, 370 reeds. This year, my goal is to cover every veteran grave in town, which is a total of 600 reeds. The impact of this lasts more than just the one day of December 16th. This actually is a fundraiser for my projects throughout the entire year. The money from last year, I hired a professional to teach me how to clean headstones. And now, this, October 22nd, I have these high school football and soccer team coming out. It's about 60 to 70 students. And we're gonna clean veteran graves for three hours at South Byfield. And that's all because of the money we raised through this reef program. So, on December 16th this year, we're hoping to have a reef for every veteran grave in town. It's about 600 reeds. Before the ceremony, my goal is to have a breakfast to bring everybody together, eat. It would encourage more volunteer to come out in unencumbered weather. And then we'll place the reeds following a ceremony at noon time. And the hall is great. I've used it before. I work with veterans for a living, and veterans have addiction issues. And this is a dry facility, which is great for the veterans who may be struggling with alcohol issues. So, I love using it, and I hope to use it in the future, as long as I possibly can.
Don, question?
Yeah.
A couple of years ago, is that how quick time goes?
This is my third year doing it.
We were doing something across from Harrison Parish at the wall. And you said you were gonna do reeds. What were we doing that day?
Yeah.
Picking up stones, cleaning stones? What did we have?
We were in the cemetery at First Parish, is where it all started.
And you said you were gonna do reeds?
Yeah, we stole the burying ground. And I was playing out of pocket. And I had to find a way to sustain this work. So, I found this program. And this has been one of my main fundraisers to keep sustaining that work. So, yeah, I told you, in the cemetery, I need to find a way to sustain this. And then, we started selling reeds.
And you said you were gonna make a break, so you have.
I have. It's great.
Is everything in order, Ellen?
It is.
Do I have any questions from the board? Are they entertaining a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Please say a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
If you guys are available on the 22nd, South Byfield, 1 o'clock, the kids start cleaning stones. You are more than welcome to join us.
Thank you, Don. Tracy, do you have a report? Any new business from the board?
I'm gonna forego mine, I'll bring it up later.
Say it again?
Said I'm gonna forego mine.
We need to kill a little time.
But I forgot. I don't know what it is anymore.
All right, don't worry about it. Citizens' concerns, hearing and seeing none. Correspondents. We have a letter from Lieutenant Karen, Governor Karen Polio. And I can remember Tracy, it was in the Old Town Hall, right? When she came and we signed this. And I always kinda wondered what she was signing, you know, what were we really doing? So, what we have in front of us is, Dear Town Administrator Polio, I am writing to congratulate the town on Newbury on having completed the best practices chosen as part of your community compact, which we signed on July 14, 2015. Fostering strong partnership with our municipalities continues to be a top priority for the Baker Polio administration. It is exciting to have the community compact program available for our partners and local government. And what she goes on to say for us is, I want to applaud the town for choosing and finalizing the financial policies, capital improvement plan, and also, we're heading into this climate change mitigation, adapt to best practices on which we got a meeting today. So, obviously, a lot of this is facing, and some of it now will be for us to go forth. We have issues within the town, such as all towns have issues with sea level rise and climate change, which maybe 10 years ago, I probably said, well, yeah, we could have sea level rise and we could have climate change. But what I've learned, for the reason that I do so much work on the marsh and see so many changes in the marsh, that guys, climate change and sea level rise is for real. The things I see that I never saw before, we're gonna have, you know, changes going forward. So, we have to look at, is the elementary school too low? You know, our well is gonna get infiltrated by salt water. A septic tank is gonna float out of the ground when they're empty. You know, things that we have to, that we would never really focus on. So, that's part of this best practices. So, with the assistance from two compact grants, which we have, and in-house technical assistance, Newbury was able to complete these best practices and make improvements in these areas. So, I think everyone deserves, you know, a kind of applause for what we've done. We also have, from Maureen Lynch, who's the superintendent, and Joanna True, who's the Whittier representative. We have the annual operation report from Whittier Regional Vocation Technical High School. And Whittier offers 22 vocational technical career areas. That's pretty wild. And as you know, they also, I'm gonna paraphrase a little bit. They also stress the curriculum in English, math, science, technology, social studies, rural languages, physical education, and other elective subjects. So, they've really reached a high level of accomplishing a lot of different things. And it's, programs are open to both females and males. And Whittier Vocational Technical Regional School is entering its 44th year. To date, we have graduated over 11,000 students from the day the school opened. The enrollment for the Eagle School for Newbury now is 11. October 1st, 2016, the school enrollment was including grade 9, 10, 11, and 12. The total was 27. I guess if I read this correctly, in 2017, we're gonna have seven graduates. The cost for Newbury to have this service is $446,502. So, it's, the school is just coming an awful long way. And it really does. And trust me, guys, in case you haven't figured it out, when you had to hire a plumber, or even to hock, huck, huck your driveway or do it, it's not so bad being in the trades nowadays. So...
I attended that graduation last year.
They're doing a nice job, right?
Wonderful.
Anything you can say?
No, it was great. Maureen does a great job. It was just, there were seven kids that graduated from them last year. This year, they also have 11 students. Yeah, they have 11 students that attend night school there as well, from Newbury.
So, once again, yes, gudos. We also have an invitation from Karen Tyler, who is the director of Veteran Services. Donnie, do you know about this?
Is it the Korean?
Yeah. Do you wanna talk, or you want me to take it? Okay.
I'll leave it to you. I don't know if I can. Thank you.
So, I did it correctly. It is an invitation. I'd like to invite the Board of Selectmen to attend the Korean Ambassador for Peace Ceremony that is taking place in Ipswich High School Performing Arts Center on October 20th at 4 o'clock. There will be Korean veterans, war veterans from your town and other towns. And the opportunity to show our veterans their support. They will be receiving, as I understand it, a medal.
Correct.
Each individual, one person. So, they'll be called up separately. And it's a peace medal. And I guess there'll be approximately 50 Korean War veterans and Mexican that might be receiving this medal. So, it'd be nice for at least us, Chuck especially, and maybe you and I and anyone else that can attend this to get out. Finally, from the correspondents, it looks like I timed it pretty well. We have a notice from Wesley, Town Clerk. And it is something we all are so happy to have and participate in. We have attached, please find a new open meeting law regulations. It'll become effective on October 6th. I'm sure they've made them a lot easier. Right, Jenny? So, anyway, that's it for the correspondents. I'm gonna have to excuse myself. Jay Allen, you all set?
Yep.
So, he's gonna open the special.
All right. We're gonna reopen the public hearing for Eric Sorensen for the development of a proposed golf center with associated amenities at 131, 133, and 151 Scotland Road. Is there a motion?
Motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
It is a motion on the part of the planning board to reopen the public hearing for site plan review application for Newbury Golf Center at 131, 133, and 151 Scotland Road. Advocate Eric Sorensen.
Okay. I'm gonna set some rules for the public hearing tonight. Please no speaking out. Everyone's gonna get a chance to take the floor and say what they want. When you come up, please come up front to the corner here so you can appear on camera. Please try to avoid being repetitive. If there are things we've already heard, if you've already said it, if you've already heard somebody said it, please refrain. We're trying to do this in an orderly manner. We've taken a lot of input. We've heard it all. We've adjusted it all. So, please don't be repetitive. Please no speaking out when somebody has the floor, because we need to have an orderly meeting here. And again, we don't need to repeat things that are already on the record. You know, we had a night to keep going rather than get mired down. So, Eric, do you have anything new to present?
I'll take it. I think, John, before we talk about our meeting, I have plenty of remarks.
Yeah, I'll do that. When we go through our list of decision criteria, I'll go through them all, and that's one of them. And we'll go with that in detail.
So, now, I mean, we, I think we're down to a couple of issues here.
Okay.
Do you want me to read the letter from Fish and Wildlife?
Sure.
We have received a letter from Fish and Wildlife. Unfortunately, I'm not able to attend the hearing tonight, although I hope to attend a hearing for this project soon. At this point, I have a few comments for consideration. The first is asking that we establish a perpetual 500-foot, no structure, no occupied dwelling setback from mass wildlife property boundary to ensure our ability to manage wildlife at Martin Burns Wildlife Management Area. And the second is to maintain a portion of the cleared area as grassland or scrubland habitat for declining bird species, incorporating annual maintenance of these areas into the operation and maintenance plan. The proponents should seek help from a bird expert during their review process to ensure the best design. The proximity of the proposed work to common pasture, a bird mecca, ensures that nesting birds would benefit significantly from this action. Sincerely, Patricia Huckery. And so, we just received that today. So, everyone is aware of that, being in the record.
Okay. Any questions or comments for up with?
Yeah, I have a few questions for Eric. We had, in the past, you've mentioned doing free clinics. I wanted to make sure that you were gonna, you were planning to do that once monthly. And for, I hope that was for Newbury residents. Any students in the area, what is your feeling about that?
I'm not gonna do it for anybody in the area. I mean, I wouldn't limit it to Newbury. I think, you know, initiatives to grow the game of golf. And, you know, PJ Professional, that's one of the criterias that, you know, we did was grow the game. So, I would not limit that just to the rest.
And...
I would give residents priority.
Up to the age 18, and once a month is around what you were...
Yeah, once a month. And if, I'll be honest with you, if the attendance is attended well, probably in the summer, it would be more than once a month for them.
Okay.
Would you ever cap it at a certain number?
No, I wouldn't cap it at a certain number. I'd bring in more instructors if I needed them. I wouldn't turn kids away from the game.
And at various times throughout this process, you've mentioned doing free things for kids, free things for the Triton team. And so, you know, one of the things that I considered is order of conditions that all Newbury residents under the age 18 be able to use the driving range for free. But I'm not sure that's what you were actually saying.
Yeah, that's not...
And so, I want to clarify, 'cause I asked you for what you meant.
Right. And I think I submitted you guys kind of the outline of that. But from a business plan, that wouldn't work to have everybody free golf. But during the clinics, the clinics, that will be provided, that we will provide some free clinics for the kids, the ball will be free then, during the clinic. It will be no charge. But not for people on the RIT team to use the range for free.
I had a, do you remember when you submitted something to us about what you were gonna do? There was like a bunch, an eight and a half mile...
Yes.
I had it. I don't have it anymore. I had it when I sat down.
I sent the copy...
To Ellen?
To Ellen.
Okay.
It's just, I mean, I can talk about, I know what it is.
Yeah.
If you want me to talk about it again.
Yeah, I think it's important.
Okay, so, one of the things was a day of revenue to the, for the high school for a scholarship. I create a scholarship committee with the principal and the high school golf coach. And we would, you know, designate obviously the criteria for that. But to give back to the, to the high school. The second thing would be the free clinics throughout the summer. And, you know, shoulder season, if we can do it, you know, if the kids are cool. And the third thing, to allow the Triton High School to practice for free during the season. And the fourth thing that's not added to that, I did get approached by the high school, the special vocational part of the high school, the woman who's in charge of that, I believe her name is Sue, to provide a job, or jobs for some of their students. And I did agree to that, that I will provide a job for the vocational part of that. And we talked a little bit about that criteria, but I am gonna meet with her when...
Two, Scioscia or... C I C, C I or something like that? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so, that's not on there, but she just recently approached me, and I agreed to that. I think it's great, if I could do that.
So, how many free, how many free clinics are you thinking, you're thinking you'll have?
I mean, you know, if we did them once a month in the summer, you know, we're open, you know, our big months are, you know, starting right out of the gate, you know, at least six. And, you know, you know, there could be more. I mean, because, yeah, I mean, if participation this summer, and the kids are encouraged to come out and learn the game, we'll do it more. One of the other, we've had a lot of discussion around local as far as the ice cream sales. Did you have a mileage? Do, what is the direction that you want included or looking at as far as local is concerned?
I mean, the ice creams don't come from Riches's. So, which is local, which is approximately 19 miles away. That's where it is. So, yeah, local, 25 miles, 50 miles.
Now, in, you talked about an escrow account. One of the things that we were looking at, our bylaw allows for us to ask for essentially damages when trees come down, and that usually is put into a, the tree fund in Newbury. My thought was that we would do the, what would normally be asked, put that into an escrow account for screening on the property. And then, if that escrow account was not used, that it would then go into the tree fund. Does that make sense to you?
Yeah, I mean, I think we came, you know, we came up with a number of $5,000. Which, you know, I think would rather go tree by tree. And, you know, I'd rather have a set amount.
Yep.
You know, I'll be honest with you, that's probably gonna be used. But if it isn't, within, you know, X amount of years, donate it to the fund. I don't see an issue in that. I'd rather do it that way, but it's a lot cleaner, every tree.
Well, yeah, we would not count every tree. Just, in some of these special permits in the past, we do a value to remove tree essentially. We use forestry guidelines and other things to establish the price for that. And we'll be discussing that later on, but I wanted to check in about that. And you would agree to the idea of dark days for the Director Butters? Their request today, I'm gonna make sure you have no longer, if that's still something you consider a viability?
I mean, a dark day for a meteor shower or something like that? Yeah, if there is a meteor shower, yeah. I mean, not, I mean, it would have to be, I think we could all agree that there would be a reason for it, not just, hey, we want a dark day in the middle of summer.
Yeah. I don't think there's any other pressing questions that I have as well.
Okay.
I have a couple. I went, I spent the weekend watching all of our YouTube public hearing. And I made a couple notes. I just wanted to clarify on a couple things. The, going back to the August 8th meeting, which was a long time ago. One of the conditions, one of the things that had come up, and I don't know if this is a planning board issue, or a board selectman issue, or if it's both. It was the infiltration basin. I just, I didn't wanna drop it and let it, you know, let it slide through. So, the condition, the thought was to condition the infiltration basin where the water feature was. There was gonna be some dig test pits. If anything material found, we'll come back to the board. I don't, I don't, I don't think you've done that, right? You haven't done more test pits.
We did do additional tests, and we took the water feature out.
Okay, so, like I said, I'm going, I'm going, yeah, I'm going, we took the water feature out.
So, I think they've addressed it by taking it out. The concerns were raised at that meeting, I think are no longer...
I thought there was one.
Maybe one, but...
There was one where...
It's been substantially addressed.
Come back, but they were substantially addressed. There was, I guess where the water, what I, in my note, it says where the water feature was, where they took it out, they were gonna dig a test pit.
It was that it was already out.
Yeah, okay. And then we're gonna dig a test pit. And then, if anything material was found. I don't think there's gonna be anything material found, but I don't...
Just for a second. You did all the testing for this detention bond?
Yeah.
You submitted the data, your consultant reviewed with the new testing data. One of the other problems that might be, if this is what that comment was, is in regards to this chamber, it's here, that he wanted more information.
Okay.
If this road is moved over here, that goes away.
Okay. Thank you. The other question that I had was, and this is going on the assumption that you're gonna move the road. Was there any plan for the fence that was gonna be there? Because if you move the road and the driveway comes in this way, there's still gonna be lights as cars pull in.
Towards one direction. And the new driveway?
Totally, yeah. Coming up the new driveway, going into the parking lot, the headlights will still go into, in the Butters yard. So, I didn't know, I mean, I'm assuming the plan is still gonna be this fence. But I don't, I just wanna confirm that. Okay. Let's see. The only other question that I had was the landscape plan. Because of landscape, and I don't know if this affects the Board of Selectmen. Where, we don't know what it's gonna look like, because we haven't drawn it out and we haven't done the work. I'm not saying that I wanted you to do it. I don't know if this, how that will affect the abiding property. So, in other words, if you pull up that driveway next door, where the driveway is now, so you dig, dig that up and let it go back, would you plan to cut any of those trees down next to the abiding properties?
Where the new dr...
Where the current driveway is?
No, where the, come on? No, we're, we're gonna clean it up at many, but no, not those big trees.
There were one or two trees planned to come down, that not what we see. Maybe two, maybe three, I can't...
So, you're not gonna tie, you're not gonna...
I don't have the landscape, no, they won't be cut.
They won't be...
Yeah, they won't be cutting any more.
They won't be cut.
Yeah, that's a mistake. All of vegetation will stay.
Okay, and I just need you to refresh my memory again. So, when we talked about the lighting, I know that you said that there's gonna be zero trespass on the Carboni's property. And I tried to read the lighting plan, but I wasn't very good at it. There's also an abutment at the back of the, on the other side of that depression is? Yes, Hamlin's. Will there be any light trespass? Are there any lights up that end at all? So, they won't see any lights?
No, she's, plus, you're gonna have 100 feet of buffer zone with 50 foot trees.
Okay.
If I may, just to introduce, while we're having this conversation. Last time, Eric, you'd asked for a tally of your support letters, which we have now. So, we have 31 Newbury residents in support, 29 non-residents, and 15 residents in opposition. And if you wanna keep looking, I can read our...
Go ahead, you can read.
Current letters in... To date, correspondents receive 09-19-17, continues in going public hearing, open 6/27/17, in support and opposition of Scotland Rose Road proposed golf facility of Eric Sorensen. Town of Newbury residents in support, Randy and Tammy Carter, Fazan Drive, Anton Malley, Five Pine Island Road. Non-resident support, Tim Danahue, Newbury Core, non, and town resident, opposition, Laura Hannah and Frances Heem.
Going back to the proposed Cedar Fence, back on the, on 8/8, that meeting, there was a proposed Cedar Fence, six foot tall, 120 feet long, which is screen lighting. Planting behind that, that fence was gonna be 10-foot-high spruce trees in addition to an escrow account, the $5,000 on that. Is that still gonna stay? And can any Director Butter draw on that account, or just...
I think there's gotta be, yeah, I think, to be fair, yeah. I think, you know, it's gotta be an agreement.
Let me just ask a quick question for you. Should the planning department be involved in that? So that it's somebody from the town that's making the determination that they're being used for the process for which they were intended? Okay.
So, the long and short of that is this whole area is now gonna get redesigned. If we build a roadway over here, we don't need the roadway coming up here. But there'll still be access from this parking lot up to here. So, I think it's incumbent upon us to continue the idea that, that any car leaving this parking lot to come up here, or vice versa, leaving here to come back here is shining a light here. So, we intend to keep that same feature, albeit maybe in a different location.
Okay. I think that's on my notes.
Okay. Before I turn it over to you, John, I'm just gonna read over our criteria of selectmen to judge a special permit application. Now, that such use of buildings and structures are in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning bylaw, which is to promote the health and safety of residents, to conserve the value of land and buildings, including the conservation of natural resources and the prevention of light and the pollution of the environment, to encourage the most appropriate use of land throughout the town. And that it's for the best interest of the town, it's not injurious or obnoxious to neighboring properties, will satisfy a community need and convenience not otherwise being served, will not affect abutting and nearby properties by increasing traffic and on-street parking, and not be connected with the use of building structures such as machinery, vehicles, materials and supplies will be stored between the street line and the front line of the structure, nor be visible from the street.
So I'm going to go through, some time ago, I've read over, it was probably the second meeting we had, the decision criteria that we have for site plan review. This is not for special permits, it's for the site plan review, and involves only the planning, the planning board. And so I'm gonna read through, and then ask each board member what their opinion is of these decision criteria, and we're gonna come to some yes, no, or not about these decision criteria tonight. We have a couple of things that I'm gonna put up on the TV, which are the result of a meeting that Martha and I and our consultant decided to have. And that has to do with the lighting and the entrance, but that's further down, so I'm gonna go through all these others first. So let me read through you, the planning board, the decision criteria that we are obligated to consider is that the planning board shall approve an application for site plan review if it finds that the applicant has submitted sufficient information from which it can determine that the proposed project will minimize, and there's gonna be six minimizers. The first is the volume of cut and fill. And so, in your opinion, do you think that this project minimizes to the extent possible the amount of cut and fill?
There will be no so far, so much no.
Yeah.
Just an input for us here? Okay, as input here, can you help us out? Is this, what is your opinion about the volume of, of cut and fill?
Well, from what the plan shows, it looks like there's gonna be some substantial amount of regrading needed to, to create the target ratings in that whole area. I guess the question comes, are you, are you planning on balanced cut and fill?
So it's borrowing from Peter to people?
Yeah.
So I'd say, I'd recommend, so I would say that that's, that's okay. So I'm gonna say on the, on the first one, we're okay with the process. The number of removed trees six inch caliber or larger. I think that we wanna defer this only because it is gonna be the subject of a subsequent discussion of the board of selectmen. Although what we wanted to bring up to you, the last meeting that we had, was that you are gonna eliminate, I think in the vicinity, of 800 and some odd trees. And you really can't have a driving range without getting rid of 800 and some odd trees. But there is a cost, and so I think that we're gonna be looking for some kind of a, maybe additional contribution to the tree fund of the town. And not a huge amount of money, but I think that we're gonna do that, but I think we need, we as, as, as both boards have not discussed that, so I think we need to go through that. But I think it's mitigatable, that's the point. That's not something that needs to be resolved any other way. Third is to minimize the area of wetland vegetation being displaced, and based on our analysis of this, there's not a significant demand of vegetation being displaced. Soil erosion, now this is also a function of what might happen with your subsequent work with the Concom, but we're assuming that you come back in as we get this thing finally approved, that you go to the Concom, that you come with a new design, and the two have to be talking to each other. Okay? The threat of air and water pollution, and that's really not significant. Traffic congestion. Okay. And so, yeah, I would agree. So the traffic congestion is not. So bear with us, but these are our decision criteria, have to do it. Avoid removal of existing stone walls, or where removal is required, minimize length of removal. So I'd like some clarification, Eric, on this. I know that there's a stone wall, it's not a property line stone wall. So it's not as critical as others that we have in town. And you are gonna be relocating it, but I also remember you saying you were gonna reuse the stones on site.
We'll reuse the stones, yeah. Throughout the front room. Yeah, those are nice stones.
Are you okay with that? I'm okay. C, provide adequate stormwater management and other utilities consistent with the requirements of Newbury Stormwater Bylaw and Planning Board's subdivision rules and regulations. Now, that does not yet been submitted, has it?
Well, the stormwater, the final stormwater plan is...
It's gonna be dependent upon, so again...
I would say we go to final sign off, actually revising.
You're gonna have to revise it. So again, we get, we'll, we'll work on that. We assume it's gonna be that. Maximize safety of pedestrians and vehicles both on the site and entering onto the, and egressing from it. I see nothing in the site plan that aggravates pedestrians' access to the site. E is provide adequate access to each structure for fire and emergency service equipment. You've had fire and police look at this, and they're fine. Minimize obstruction of scenic views from publicly accessible locations. And I believe based on the trajectory of the site being relatively high up, that you would have done that. So here's G, is minimize visual intrusion by controlling the visibility of parking, storage, or other outdoor service areas viewed from public ways or premises residentially used. So this is really what we've been talking about, about the impact to, to abutters. And I believe that the, with, with the new entryway coming in, that it will be greatly improved. However, what I'd like to do is, you know, make this subject to you, meeting with Martha during the period of time that you're presenting and stuff, and then she reviews it for the board. I know, because I don't want the board to get back involved in this. But town planner typically, you know, we delegate responsibility to her to look at design issues. And so I'd like to delegate that to her, to meet with you, because she's gonna meet with you on a couple of others that we had already talked about. Minimize intrusion of glare from headlights. So this is where I'd like, if we can bring this up on the, on the TV to go over this. This was the result of a meeting that Martha and myself, our lighting consultant, Eric, Mike and Mike. What, no?
This is...
No. It's inevitable, isn't it? No, it's inevitable. No, every time we do a PowerPoint for something like that...
It's technology, why is that designed?
Everything goes wrong.
Not with sixteen.
I know, I'm sorry. Caleb is supposed to be here. Yeah, I'll tell you what we're gonna do, thank you. I is minimize unreasonable departures from the character, materials, and scale of buildings in the vicinity...
This is planning board notice.
...as viewed from public ways and places. And we don't really have a sketch for those, you have two buildings you're proposing. I don't really have, we don't really know what they look like, just submit them to Martha, so we can see what they look like, okay? Prevent contamination of groundwater from any source, that's all to do with the Concom and the new SW, whatever it is. Almost there? Okay. I know, but you gotta, all right. No? Zoom. Yeah, that's fine, we'll start that way. Hopefully you can see this. So I'm gonna read this first part of it, and I'll read the whole thing. This is a document that we prepared after the meeting we had with Eric and his consultant. And in response to concerns regarding site plan review decision criteria, the one I just brought up, 6H, that a proposed project will minimize the intrusion of glare from headlights and sight lighting on surrounding properties. The individuals listed below, which are the individuals I just talked about, met at Newbury Town Hall on the 21st of 2017, and developed the following mitigation strategies, subject to approval by the planning board and the board of selectmen. Number one, the driveway will be moved to a location approximately 500 feet to the west along the southerly side of Scotland Road. Number two, the design of the driveway will, to the greatest extent possible, reflect the residential character of homes on the south side of the street, and will not be industrial in nature. Specific care will be given to the lighting and landscaping. The lighting will be soft light, not greater than 3,000 K, and will be on poles painted flat black, which are not higher than 20 feet high. The driveway design will respect the site's topography. Number three, based on the visual inspection of similar lighting at Leo J. Markin Driving Range, the color temperature of 5,700 K at the Newbury Driving Range is acceptable. Number four, in order to make, in order to make the 50 foot poles surrounding the range area less obtrusive, the poles will be placed as close as possible to the tree lines as constructed, in accordance with the final approved site plan. Just, yeah, that's what... Number five, prior to installation of the 50 foot poles, those are the ones around the, the range itself, on, on the sides of the driving range, surrounding the range, a site visit with the applicant and town planner will be made to determine which poles will be painted flat black. Painting the poles a fat, flat black and locating them near the tree line will minimize any adverse visual impact of the poles. Number six, the range lighting, the 50 foot poles, will be controlled via at least two switching circuits, one circuit per pole alternating as they move away from the tree T-boxes, to allow for the reduction in the number of lighted poles during low-demand periods, while still preserving the appearance of an open facility, reducing the potential for glare, and minimizing energy costs. And number seven, in the event the issues regard, that issues regarding light intrusion arise during the operation of the range, applicant will meet with the abutters and the town to discuss. Those present, Eric, Michael, Mike, Lucas Storm, Strom, John, Martha. So this is what we did. So I guess I ask of you, in response to item 6H, would you accept these as mitigations for...
Would I, one question, with regard to number three, the lighting that's similar to Leo J. Markin, is that temperature what you had originally proposed, or is that a modification?
No, it's what they proposed, and we were gonna cut it back, and I went back and looked at it again, and I said it's acceptable. In other words, what I saw in the field was not a glaring blue light, which I led to believe by someone that it had been, and it wasn't. It was not, not that, that difficult lighting. Right, so that, that's it. So that leaves us with... Enhance the appearance of the project the greatest degree possible by means of landscaping and other site amenities. I commented early on, when you made your proposal, and your landscaper was here, I thought that the landscape plan was really quite strong. And I know that you need to make some adjustments to it, but I'm assuming that as those adjustments are made, that we presented to Martha, and she'll be able to book the landscaper on it. L, minimize impacts of the use on adjacent properties through regulation of hours of operation, deliveries, noise, rubbish, removal, and onsite storage. So we have had opinions about this, and we're not strongly opposed to the hours of operations, or the, and we think that most of the deliveries and noise and rubbish removal will be handled adequately. And then M, ensuring clients' compliance with the provisions of the Newbury zoning bylaw, including parking and signs, not exceeding above regulations of use of structures referred to above. So we, of course, can do that. And then, what our conditions of approval say is that site plan approval may be made subject to such conditions, modifications, and restrictions as the planning board may deem necessary in order to satisfy any of the decision criteria listed above. So these are quite specifically the planning board's recommendations to move forward with mitigation for that. And then there are two things that are out there, the first is hours of operation, and the tree removal, and how that's gonna be addressed. Okay? So... I don't think we vote tonight. Am I right? We've just taken, that we've gone through our criteria, and our, we're okay with our criteria as we've described it.
Good for now?
Yep.
All right. Yes, disposed.
So this number six, that you have, the range lighting will be controlled via at least two switching circuits, can you, can you describe what that's gonna look like?
In downtimes, when there's not a lot of people out there, or one person, or no people, every other light, if there's, let's say, 20 lights, only 10 will be lighted.
Okay. And if nobody's sensor, who's playing what team?
The bottom line is, it's not busy, shut the lights off, I don't wanna pay electric bill.
Right.
It's just common sense from a business standpoint.
Right.
I mean, you know, if the weather's iffy, you know, closer.
Right.
I mean, that's, you know, I'm not gonna want them on, so...
Right, no, I just didn't know what those are both like.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Do you wanna read through the criteria, would you like me to? I guess I will. Okay. All right, these are potential, a potential order of conditions as far as the board of selectmen go. Number one, in order to ensure that sounded like screening is sufficient for direct and indirect abutters, the applicant will hold an escrow, $10,000 for the first five years of operation, $5,000 for the second five years of operation. Therefore, the cost of modifications for additional sound or light screening requested by abutters will be split between the applicant and the abutters. Should the applicant and abutters be unable to agree on the necessity for and/or extent of additional modifications, final determination shall be made by the selectmen. Two, hours of operation would remain unchanged except for between the dates of September 15th and November 16th. So hours of operation September 15th to September 31st would be closed at 8:30 PM. October 1st to October 31st, close at 8:00 PM. November 1st to November 15th, closed at 7:30 PM. November 16th to March 30th, closed at 6:00 PM. And April 1st to September 14th, closing time would be at 9:00 PM. Number three, upon request written, upon written request from any direct abutment, the applicant must provide a dark day, for example, an evening with no lights. All such requests must be made at least 30 days prior to the date requested. And the request cannot be for a date on which there's already a published event at the premises. Each direct abutment may make no more than one such request per year, and the request can be due to a natural event such as a meteor shower or a private event such as a family gathering. Number four, the property shall be gated and secured by a Knox box to which the town's fire and police departments must have access 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. Five, all ice cream served at the property shall be sourced from a local producer. For the purposes of this condition, the term "local" shall mean that the ice cream must be produced within blank miles of the premises, which we can determine when we deliver it. Six, with the exception of trees and stumps, no native or natural materials shall be removed from the site. from the site. Seven, the applicant shall establish and fund an annual scholarship fund to be given each year to a graduating senior on the Triton High School for his or her use towards secondary educational pursuits. The recipient shall be a member of the Triton Golf Team who exhibits great promise in the sport of golf, exemplary sportsmanship, and service to the community. The award will be given in consultation with the golf coach and the selectmen. The applicant shall make contributions to the fund on a monthly basis in the following amounts to be determined. Eight, all Newbury residents under the age of 18 shall be able to use the driving range free of charge. Nine, all members of the Triton Golf Team shall be able to use the driving range free of charge. Ten, the applicant shall provide clinics once monthly to all residents under the age of 18, free of charge. And that's it. So...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Vice chairman.
I'm sorry. Prior to deliberating, would you like input from us on the 10 criteria you put out? Because I know there were some blanks and some things, and maybe some things we could provide you our thoughts on as well.
Yeah, you can, if you would like.
Sure. I got it.
Okay.
Okay. So, on number five, I think we were thinking 25 miles?
Just to do another point, just if you say...
Thirty mile, again.
Yeah.
We're not looking for 100 miles. We were thinking 25 to 30 miles.
Yeah.
On seven, our offer was one full day of, is it a profit or revenue?
A profit, you know, I mean, it's something to be worked out with, without, but yeah, a profit.
Per season?
Yeah.
Okay, is what we had offered on seven, what we had been stating we did. On eight, as we said earlier, when the request was made, there would not be free driving range for anyone that were under 18, but it would be free use of the range during all clinics. On number nine, we had also discussed pre-use of the driving range for the Triton Golf Team during the season.
During their season.
During their season. And then I think the one month, on the monthly clinic was exactly what we were talking about.
So, number 10 is...
Fine.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I think you wanna put during the season, I mean, during winter, you know, you're not gonna have a clinic. So, I think, you know, maybe from, you know, April to September, you know, just a... But I have no problem, you know, or six per year, maybe do that, that would be, you know, at a minimum.
Sure you don't wanna offer them to the year, even if no one shows up?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then number seven, just after, after we're open, I think we should put that in there, once we're up and running for business.
Well, I think if we're gonna do it, it's a day's worth of revenue, and why not to the after we're open?
Yes, I imagine you will be making. Making the contributions of scholarship funds are not welcome.
You don't have any problem with making monthly contributions to that, or you wanna make it...
I wanna do a day.
Or one lump sum.
A one-day lump sum.
Do a day of revenue, one lump sum.
So, would you be advertising this to try and get as many of those parents in? I see how he's looking at it.
And you'd get kids involved.
I misunderstood you before. I thought you were doing one day a month.
So, you'd probably say 10 to 2, you know, this is going, you know, get the kids out there, get the school involved, make it a big deal. And that's generally the business, how it is. You really advertise, you put the paper, you get the kids all involved, so everybody comes out and supports the scholarship.
I thought you were saying one day each month when you proposed it before, and I was like, well, then how does this choose the day where if no one shows up?
Yeah, no.
It's to promote the community.
Yeah, I understand that.
Come to the location for the specific system, you were running a Kiwanis Fair or a lockdown.
Yeah, no, I understand what you're driving at. I misunderstood you before.
And what are the parameters around the golf team?
During their season. So, when their season starts, their fall season, so whenever it start, you know, when their, the golf team season starts and when it ends.
Okay, what will they get?
They'll be able to use the driver range at no cost.
At, after school, you'll set out?
After school, when, yeah, and I think we need a coach to be present.
Especially when they're playing.
Yeah. A coach, you know, a coach will schedule practices there or whatever. I think you're gonna put the coach be a present.
Okay.
You know?
How do you feel about during scheduled practices?
Yeah, during scheduled practice, absolutely.
So, your concept is this will be their practice facility?
This will be their home practice facility. And they play their golf at Old Newbury, but they don't have a practice facility.
Yep.
You know, they would be...
Maybe that's the better way to word it, is that the range would be their home practice
I'm gonna deliberate on this after public comment.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, have I moved to public comment? Anyone have anything?
Um...
Thank you. Chuck, do you have anything?
Okay, now we'll open to public comment. Everyone, please come to the front, stand right there so you could be on camera. State your name, your address, town you're from, if you're not from town, and just try to keep it simple, simple. Don't be repetitive. If it's been said before, if you've said it before, we've heard you, it's been added into the record, we're looking for anything new right now. So, is there anyone that would like to come on up, sir?
My name is Tom Walsh. I live in Newburyport, 354 High Street, and I'm here because I'm a member of the Board of the League of Essex County Sportsman's Clubs. I think Pat Huckery in her letter to the, to the board has stated our various concerns, and I'm just gonna repeat one of them, and that is that I think that Sorensen et al. has done a very good job of respecting the 500-foot border away from the wildlife management area, with the exception of one small shed, which they said is not something that's going to be normally occupied, so that we're not really gonna be losing any hunting area in the wildlife management area because of this development. So, that is our primary concern with respect to developments that find themselves right on the edge of wildlife management areas, because as sportsmen, we bought all those wonderful areas. We'd like, we hate to see them being chewed away bit by bit. Anyway, they've done a good job with that, and I'm good with that. I wanna say something else, and that is, as a, I've been living in this area now for, my God, 35 years. I've talked with my wife about that from time to time, and we're always amazed how long it's been. But I'm a little bit concerned that you people are looking forward well enough to realize that hopefully you're not opening a Pandora's Box with respect to the south side of Scotland Road, i.e., commercial development. And it is an area that was set aside many years ago for residential and farming activities, and you should be very concerned about letting that slip by, because these, allowing the camel's nose to get under the flap of the tent tends to be a problem. So, once you get this established, you might have a terrible time now with the next commercial enterprise wants to develop in the next spot on the south side of Scotland Road. So, I have to say, thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna close public comment.
Just to clarify for everyone in the audience, once public, the public hearing is closed, we will deliberate, and we will take no information from anyone, or against, there will be no more public comment, no more public input at that point. So, the public hearing is closed, and it becomes board deliberation only thereafter.
And that's closed, boards.
And we wanna talk about Pat Huckery's before we close the public hearing, or not?
We're gonna go, that comes to our conditions.
Yeah, so we'll discuss that as a board goes through.
Yeah, after we close.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
What to put? Okay.
Okay, I move to close our public hearing on the site plan review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. So, we have the full board.
Okay. Nope. All right. Okay, if you wanna go through and discuss the issues, potential conditions.
Well, I'll start with the first one.
I can, I'll read it out, and then we can, all right. Number one, in order to ensure that sound and light screening sufficient for direct and indirect abutters, the applicant will hold an escrow $10,000 for the first five years of operation, $5,000 for the second five years of operation. Therefore, the cost of modifications for additional sound or light screening requested by abutters, or thereafter, I should say, the cost of modifications for additional sound or light screening requested by abutters will be split between the applicant and the abutters. Should the applicant and the abutters be unable to agree on the necessity for and/or extent of additional modifications, final determination shall be made by the selectmen.
The numbers that I came up with for this are based on the tree removal that's going to take place. In looking at the hardwood and conifer plantation prices for trees, the amount cleared value-wise between $13.75 and $8,800. So, normally, in, if this was a solar clearing or something, we would ask for that money to go straight in tree fund. My thought was, since this is mixed, we'd kinda split the total down the middle, and that, as I said when, in the earlier discussion, should this money that's being held in escrow not be used during the allotted time, would then be donated to the town's tree fund. And so, that seemed to give the right amount. It gives a lot of flexibility if there are site and sound issues, as far as the money held and the ability to ameliorate those problems. So, I felt like it was money that we might be asking them for anyway. This way, it can be used onsite before it goes into the town's general funds if needed. So, that was how I came to that, and I wasn't sure if you guys were comfortable with it as an idea.
Okay. And I just might add that that addresses our second criteria, because it does create the tree fund, which addresses the broader issue of the problem of removing so many trees, and then how do you mitigate that? So, board is comfortable, and our board is comfortable, that is an evaluation.
Okay, any other questions input for number one? Question, please, go ahead.
You had said for site and sound, I don't know how you can mitigate against sound trees.
Well, actually, they do a pretty good job.
Um, no, you have to plant a whole hell of a lot of trees and have a lot of lanes between.
Any barrier does some. So, if you think about, you know, there's a wall between us and Caleb right now, the door's open, we can hear him, but it's some mitigation, you know? It's something, you know, if a neighbor says, "That thing's really loud," whatever that thing is, you know, maybe you build a shed around it. It's a, it's something that would be negotiated with the neighbors, and if the neighbors and Mr. Sorensen couldn't come up with a solution, they'd drag us into it to help. You know, generators are often one of the things that people say are really loud. There are ways to make them quieter. Screening at the edge is one of them.
And also, sound and light screening, you know, it isn't necessarily just trees, it can be a fence, it can be a noise reflective surface.
Yeah.
All right. I feel that, okay.
Yes, that's quite a...
I'm just, I'm sorry, that much they said, the law doesn't speak how loud they are. We don't really know how loud they'll be, but...
It's a function of so many things, the wind direction, the density of the air at the time.
As long as you can mitigate.
I mean, it's just, yeah, you just never know kind of how loud the ping is gonna be.
Right, that's what I mean.
Would you feel better if the language after sound and light screening was, i.e., trees, fence, et cetera?
I mean, I thought the screening element left it open, whereas if we just put the money in the tree fund right away, there's very little that can be done. This gives the option to correct, is my feeling, any oversights that might go into the plan.
Motion to add...
Okay. Well, maybe it's more intentional for additional sound and light screening by a product. Okay.
Motion to add fence or sound barrier to the language in number one.
Where would you ban it?
Thereafter, the cost of modifications for additional sound or light screening, i.e., Anything else on number one? Okay. What's that? Yeah, motion to, motion to accept condition number one.
We've had a motion to...
Okay, motion, sorry. Motion to add fence, trees, and sound barrier to the language of condition number one.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You did a good job. All right. Number two, hours of operation would remain as proposed, except for between September 15th and September, September 14th and...
Let me just read the ones that are down there. Did I get it wrong?
Nope, 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 nope. September 15th to September 31st will be closed at 8:30 PM.
But there are 30 days in September.
Right, but that's when this goes along with the sunset time schedule.
30 days, so, yeah. I get it.
So, that should be September 30th, if there's no such thing as September 30th.
Okay, fair enough.
You will have the actual draft.
Right. This is a draft, so...
Right, it's September 15th through September 30th.
Close at 8:30. October 1st or October 31st, closed at 8:00 PM. November 1st is on, November 15th, closed at 7:30 PM. November 16th to March 30th, closed at 6:00 PM. April 1st to September 14th, closed at 9:00 PM. Okay, discussion.
Well, I think you wanted to modify this so that there was no more than an hour and a half of time with the lights on.
Right, 90, with the modifications, the longest the lights will be on, on any given day is 92 minutes.
So, I think that is the rationale behind that.
So, all year, it never exceeds 90 minutes. It varies from no lights on at all, given the time of year, to 90 minutes. These modifications are really designed for when kids go back to school, daylight savings time, and the loss of screening due to leaf loss on the trees. Any comments on number two, for... Motion to accept condition two, as read.
Well, I think, we're not accepting them now, we're gonna direct, but they're written.
Okay, motion to direct.
Well, let's just, no, let's just do it all at once at the end.
Okay. So, we'll move on to...
Number three.
Number three, get the lead.
No, number three, upon request.
Three, upon request written, upon written request from any direct abutter, the applicant must provide a dark day, i.e., an evening with no lights. All such requests must be made at least 30 days prior to the date requested, and the request cannot be for a date on which there was already a published event at the premises. Each direct abutter may make no more than one such request per year, and the request can be due to a natural event such as a meteor shower or a private event such as a family gathering. Discussion.
I like that.
I mean...
By a published event, yeah. All right, we'll move on to number four. The property shall be gated and secured by an OX box to which a town's fire and police departments must have access 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. Discussion on that one.
We have to have something like this because of compensating.
I don't think we have to put it in, it's already well...
Well, we can, we'll have Jenny look at that when we have her do the draft.
Any other questions on number four? All right. Number five, all ice cream served at the property shall be sourced from a local producer. For the purposes of this condition, the term "local" shall mean that the ice cream must be produced within 25 miles of the premises. Any comment or question on that? Number six, with the exception of trees and stumps, no native or natural material shall be removed from the site. Questions or comments?
I include this because it's part of what they had submitted. I think it helps mitigate some of the planning board issues as far as removal and it also keeps Scotland Road cleaner during the construction process.
Okay. Number seven, the applicant shall establish and fund an annual scholarship fund to be given each year to a graduating senior on the Triton Regional High School golf team for his or her use to his post-secondary educational pursuits. The recipient shall be a member of the Triton Golf Team who exhibits great promise in the sport of golf, exemplary sportsmanship, and service to the community. The award will be given in consultation with the golf coach and the selectmen. The applicant shall make contributions to the fund on a monthly basis in the following amount and what was proposed is one full day of profit per season.
Did he call it a day of revenue or a day of profit?
Well, we could, we can always change...
I don't think it should be revenue.
The application... Will contribute to the fund based on a one-day fundraiser. I mean, we can hash out the details of that in the writing of the order of conditions if people are comfortable with that as an idea of a one-day, once-a-year fundraiser for the scholarship.
I like it.
Okay. So...
Is everyone comfortable with number sevens? Okay. Number eight, all new residents under the age of 18 shall be able to use a driving range free of charge. That one's a bit much.
Yeah, a misunderstanding of what you're saying, but that was still so very...
Strike number one. Number nine. Number nine, all members of the Triton Golf Team shall be able to use the driving range free of charge.
So, after the discussion with the applicant, I would like to amend it, and this will come out, I'm sure, in the drafting, but all members of the Triton Golf Team shall be able to use the driving range as their home practice facility and shall be free of charge during scheduled practices. Scheduled practices.
One thing I'd like to add to this, maybe we can add a week before the season opens so they can get the rust off. If we're really trying to help these kids play.
Scheduled, that would be scheduled, probably be scheduled practices, but we can all add it in.
Yeah, it has to be scheduled.
One week.
So who's going to schedule the home practices? The coach does, right?
Yeah, the coach. So we'll fine tune that in the, in the writing of these address drafts.
Ten, the applicant shall provide clinics at least once monthly to all residents under the age of 18, free of charge.
Yeah, I mean, we can amend it to the hot season as Eric requested or we can make him post-clinics and no one attends. I don't know what makes the most sense to people.
I don't know, cap it, do you cap it at six per year, April to September, like just discussed?
Say... Minimums? What was that? Thought we weren't allowed to take any input.
I'm asking my board.
I would think we could do a minimum of six a year or eight a year. Eight a year since we're giving them that many months that are...
Well, if you think about it, right, January, February, March, it's probably snow on the ground. So, April, you have a chance at a clinic. May, June, July, August, September. So, May, June, July, August, September, that's five months you'll have a clinic. October, I think you can have a clinic. Could have been a chance to have it in October than you do in April. So, I'd say we do it, how about April through October? So that's April, May, June, July, August, September, that's seven months.
Okay. So, instead of at least once monthly, we say seven clinics per year?
April through November.
April through November.
Seven.
Can you read that over again?
This would be, the applicant shall provide clinics at least once monthly to all residents under the age of 18, free of charge. Seven clinics per year, April through October, is that the approximate?
No, November. Oh, October, sorry.
Yeah, April through October.
He also brought up something about jobs in your school. I'd be interested in your... The proposal draft, something about that. We'll just draft and look at it later and see if it makes sense to us since it's proposed, but we didn't have a lot of information on it.
Okay, do you want to word that?
The applicant shall provide jobs to Triton youth based on the recommendation of the Triton spaces. I think that's what was going on there.
Please, folks.
I don't know, I don't know if we need to put that in order of conditions. I think he's going to... I don't know. I don't see how you could condition that. I just hope you get people that want to apply for jobs. I don't know about you, but today's youth, market is another chocolate.
There's still a few workers out there.
Yeah, I'm not convinced of that being, he just brought it up today, so I mentioned it. So I'd be happy to take it back out again, but I don't know what other people feel and I don't know, you know, he didn't have a lot of...
Yeah, they're like that. I think we should, that's what we should.
So that's... Say that and as Jenny draws it up.
So, yeah, I think the applicant should, at least in hydrology, the applicant...
I only wrote shorthand because I'm trying to do this in talk. We will have to draft something about it and now that it's a special needs, we can make it clear.
He said vocational.
And we can discuss it further and see if we've got something that's actually drafted.
Now, you want to talk about Pat Hattner's letter?
Yeah, so that would be called as twelve and thirteen. Do you want me to read those again?
Do you want me to read it?
Here, in front of you.
Yeah. So, the comments she has for consideration are to, one, to establish a perpetual 500-foot, no structure, no occupied dwelling setback from the mass wildlife's property boundary to ensure our ability to manage wildlife at Martin Burns Wildlife Management Area.
I think that's a fine order of condition given that it matches with the plan they've already submitted and would keep any expansion in the future from hinging upon...
Jenny, do you know if that's something which goes for the special permit or does it go to the site plan review? Does it matter?
If it's not in your criteria...
It's not in our criteria.
Then it's something that, you know, the board, I think it's the board naturally goes to special...
I would say it's under our purview because it's, you know, conservation of natural resources and prevention of light pollution in the United States.
I think the applicant might want to clarify something. I know public comments closed, but given it's the applicant, you know, that's public comments.
Public comments closed.
Right, but it's the applicant.
We're deliberating, there's no more comments.
Okay. I just, I think that there is a misunderstanding as to what the current plan has.
We're halfway through it.
No, 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 ask you the 500-foot bumper. I think what the board is saying in terms of their perception of the current plan, in terms of what you've just deliberated about, may not be accurate.
So, the current plan has a building within 500 feet is what we're being told. Non-habitable building, so...
Do we have Pat's letter?
300 feet and 28 feet is a shed.
No structure.
Well, it's no occupied dwelling.
No structure slash...
No structure slash no occupied dwelling.
Well, I'm not sure I need a clarification from her. Does that mean the structure has to be occupied?
Means you can't live in it. And then you need no structure. I don't know, to me that says no structure slash non-occupied dwelling.
No structure, whether it's occupied or unoccupied.
Well, this is going to be even the other one, which I think is the pro shop, is going to be, you know, 375 feet.
Just to clarify, this is, this is the mass wildlife property here.
Oh, thank you.
It was my understanding...
The mass wildlife property.
Oh, that's a big difference.
It was my understanding that this complies.
Well, let's just take a quick, if you guys keep on talking, I'll see if I can do it.
Oh, this is meter side of that wall. Please have a seat, Mr. Rosen.
So, as far as this goes if they're...
Yes, it is. It's about 500 feet.
That's what I thought.
It's about 500 feet to their property.
But we want to drop it down to 450 just to make sure we don't set an order of conditions that's against what we actually want to say?
That would be agreeable.
Is everyone comfortable with that?
Sure. Thank you. Alicia?
I'm lost, can you explain?
So, instead of...
Basically, the question was, is one of the buildings within 500 feet of the property line, which we just determined it's closed, but it isn't. As far as scaling from this plan.
Okay.
So this would comply with mass fishery and wildlife's recommendation.
Okay.
Rather than going 500 feet, we're saying 450 just to make sure the applicant is actually complying with the order of conditions that we've set.
Okay. I'm trying to...
450?
Do you want to read that second piece of letter?
Yeah. Maintain a portion of the cleared area as grassland and shrubland habitat for declining bird species. Incorporate annual maintenance of these areas into the operations and maintenance plan. The proponent should seek help from a bird expert during the review process to ensure the best design. Proximity of the proposed work to the common pasture or bird mecca ensures that nesting birds would benefit significantly from this action.
I'm not comfortable burdening them with this at this late juncture in the process. I feel like, while we may have had some miscues with fishing wildlife on this, we've been doing this for months now and to show up this afternoon with a letter asking that without giving the applicant the time to respond, I'm not over the eardr to do that.
Well, my thought is that since the landscape is still, you know, out there is still, they're going to still move, they have to still do the dying. They have to move the thriving stuff. You could ask that they put in their landscape plan, you know, be mindful of the grassland and the habitat, that not one aspect?
I think that is potentially pretty open-ended. I mean, what is that but grassland?
Right.
I mean, could that be wildlife? In which case I think it's compatible with driving range.
Yeah, I think we can...
Could be a can of worms.
We can ask that they consult with fishing wildlife about their landscaping, but I don't think, I don't feel that we can condition on them providing bird habitat.
No, and I'm not saying that we do do that. I'm just thinking that where there's still, the work hasn't been done yet on their landscape plan, if we could maybe, if we could get some input from the bird people?
Consider it.
To consider it.
Yeah, consider it.
That's what I'm saying.
Consider it's reasonable.
So, we'll ask Jenny to draft in order of asking them to consider providing nesting habitat and other recommendations from fishing wildlife.
As is deemed feasible.
And I think that falls under our bylaw here where it says, include the conservation of natural resources, terms of unsprobed ownership of the town.
What she asked for was pretty extreme, as to my mind. I'm happy with consultation.
Yeah, at this point, I agree. But I mean, if the work had been done, it would have been a whole other story, but they haven't even done that work yet.
Okay. So we're through that. It seems to be a comfort level with what we've worked out here. Do we need an official motion, Jenny?
A move to direct me to draft a list of conditions.
Motion to direct town council to draft the list of conditions.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We need a motion to direct town planner and working with Jenny to come up with the conditions of approval for site plan review.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I've moved that we review those conditions at November 15th, Selectmen's meetings.
And we can make that.
Okay. See if folks can make that.
Yep.
Second.
All those in favor?
What's the date?
Aye. Good? All those in favor?
Aye.
Well, Peter can read it. How many meetings? Elizabeth Smith, you travel.
Look, George is on this one.
George is on this one.
Okay, so...
Jenny's on this one.
Okay, so we'll be okay, so, yes. So let's have a vote that we need.
I'm moving that we're only on November 14th at 7:15, 7:15 p.m.
All of them, Chris?
Aye.
Next consideration and next step?
And we have to continue because we're going to reconvene?
No, we close the public hearings. So we're just discussing the order of conditions and then we'll vote on the specific reasons of the conditions that we're actually... Yeah, and we'll vote on the special permit as a whole, which I find it a lot.
Okay. All right, so what do we, what do we need to close out here?
We'll close the public hearing or...
Well, we don't have to close.
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn your meeting. We have other stuff to do. Okay, then our motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
All those in favor? See you guys.
Thank you. Yeah, we're going to take a five-minute recess.
Review of meeting minutes, we have none. Warrants, do we need a motion? Do we have warrants? Motion?
So moved.
Give me a second. Any discussion, all those in favor? Any meeting updates from anyone?
I've been focused on, I know there's something I'm supposed to tell you guys, I don't know what it is.
That'd be good. And we do have an executive session. Do you have something to read?
I do.
Trace the number, yeah.
Okay.
I move we enter into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the town. Rule called vote of the board of selectmen. Chairman Walker?
Yes.
Selectman Bear is not here. Selectman Jespersen, yes. Selectman Colby?
Yes.
Selectman Wendergill?
Yes.
This meeting will not reconvene at the end, at the conclusion of the executive session.